Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, Tuesday, the first of December, 2020. Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Nowakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Cormus, present.
All right, from the top.
Item number one, CDBGCV funding allocation.
Item is open.
Okay, this item is open, and I believe I saw Mr. Mathi. Mr. Mathi?
Thank you, Chairman. It's good to see all of you today for this. The item before you is a proposed budget for the CDBGCV resources that we've received from the federal government as part of the CARES Act. I'm joined by a number of staff, both from the Mayor's Office of Strategic Planning, the Department of Community Services, also from the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency, who have been working on this for quite some time. These dollars are distinct from regular CDBG dollars because they're to be targeted to respond to COVID impact in the city of Buffalo. So the staff has been engaging numerous community organizations, members of the public, obviously looking at quite a bit of data out there to understand what the various impacts are, and also now have created something that we refer to as the framework to respond to the challenges that have been created by COVID in the city of Buffalo. So there are a number of programs that are in this budget that are new to the city of Buffalo. We have not had a rental assistance program before. We have not had the direct mortgage assistance program before. We've had counseling. We have not had grant programs for small businesses in quite some time that we believe all of these are very important to respond to what is happening in the city of Buffalo right now as it regards COVID. Couple of points. This is referred to as an amendment in the document. That is a technical term. This does not touch any of the existing CDBG dollars that has already been budgeted by this council, so I think that's very important to understand. This is above and beyond the other dollars that have been provided to the city of Buffalo. So all those other projects that were previously approved are still approved and are not changed by this budget in any way, shape, or form. Again, the word amendment is a technical term. And we are seeking, at this point in time, to get the budget approved so we can draw the money down into the bank account by January, which is very important for us. The county program that we have been embedded with is wrapping up. You might have seen, for instance, the article in the paper about the small business program, and also you've sure seen the information about both the rental assistance and the mortgage programs as well. We hope to stack very close behind those programs which are wrapping up at the end of December, which is why it's important to bring this money down into the bank account for January. So a lot of these dollars will be able to begin actually being distributed by February at the earliest. The county program had a deadline of the end of the year. It was a very aggressive deadline, obviously, for the county with those CARES Act dollars. This, these dollars have a deadline of three years, so it's not comparable. So that's one of the reasons, for a couple of reasons. A, learning from the county program and how it functioned, but also they had a need to get a lot of money out the door very quickly where we have a bit more time. Having said three years, we do not expect this to last three years by any stretch of the imagination. The need is great. The dollars that we have compared with the need doesn't come close to meeting what we believe the need is going to be in the city of Buffalo as it relates to our tenants and as it relates to our homeowners and also our small businesses. The framework that we've created, though, isn't about one type of money, so it's not just about CDBGCV. Again, everybody is aware that there is a change at the federal level at this point in time. The expectation is that there is a greater likelihood of stimulus in these areas. That might come in the form of CDBG, that might come in the form of other sources of funds. We don't know. We're not saying it's certainly going to happen, but what we've done is whether it's federal money, state money, philanthropic money, we've created a framework with which we can administer and distribute additional dollars to our residents in the city of Buffalo, again, meeting the various needs that have additional needs that have been created as a result of the pandemic. So another point is that a lot of the data and the impact out there on our communities, it's still evolving. So for instance, when we're talking about rental assistance, there are, the courts have not been addressing many of the evictions that are out there related to this. Same thing for mortgage foreclosures. So we have a sense of the size of the problem, but we don't know exactly how big it's going to be until those institutions start functioning again. So that means that unlike typical CDBG where that budget largely stays as is, and then we might come back to you if something is either, you know, the bid's too high, the bid's too low, there's a little bit of money left over and we put it somewhere else, we might be back with you on this on a more regular basis as we adjust to, A, the need that we are seeking to meet in the community based upon the data, and as we are learning more about the impact of COVID and how we can strategically address it, but then also, again, to go back to those other funding sources that are out there. So for instance, if there's a large tranche of money that is put in rental assistance, but there is less now, that there is not the same amount of money that is in the small business assistance, we might come back to you to suggest shifting because if, as one need is met, we will adjust to meet another need with the dollars that we have. The, under the current regulations at the federal level, we can adjust in as little as five days, which is clearly very important in these times, that it doesn't drag out as we go through an amendment process again in order to meet a need. The difference this time, though, again, is we need to submit this initial budget right now so that we can draw down the money into the bank account. That's going to take probably about 30 to 45 days in order to do it. So with that kind of as a setting overall for the budget that is before you, I just wanted to go through it quickly with you in terms of the numbers that we've proposed in the budget as part of the framework. And again, when I say the framework, I also want to say that we have our standard CDBG dollars as well. So our emergency program dollars, our whole multifamily dollars, all of that, again, is we have COVID in mind even when we're spending those, so that we are complementing a lot of where we have dollars with these funds where we don't have the dollars, A, or don't we feel we need more. So to get into the budget, the first line that you have, which is the largest line by far, because we believe this is going to be where COVID is going to have the largest impact in the city of Buffalo is rental assistance and eviction prevention system. This complements what this body approved with the emergency solutions grant dollars, but there's different income levels that are eligible to receive this with CDBGCV as opposed to ESGCV. We are still going to focus on the most vulnerable individuals in the city of Buffalo, those threatened with homelessness, obviously, and in greatest need. So that is, and then in addition to that, there's a lot of services that are required, legal services and counseling services that are required for eviction prevention as well. There are partners that, there's an RFQ where we are identifying the partners that are going to assist with certain portions of this rental assistance program. We do have, though, for the sake of everybody, the ease of everybody, a central intake system that is currently operating, that has been distributing the county CARES dollars and a number of other funds as well. We will be funding a portion of that as well. It's the 2-1-1 system. So if somebody is challenged with rental assistance, a constituent reaches out to you with a challenge about rental assistance, it's hopefully as simple as 2-1-1 to, for the intake before that system didn't exist. So I think that's an innovation that we have here. And again, to emphasize, it's not just about CDBGCV, it's about all the sources of rental assistance dollars that could potentially benefit our residents in the city of Buffalo. So it is difficult enough clearly for individuals threatened with eviction. We're trying to make it as simple as we can for those individuals and bring all resources to bear with the program. We're also looking to assist potentially with case management. These are extremely trying times. There's a lot of reasons that people are, could be facing eviction, it could be a direct health impact, it could be the loss of a job, it could be the childcare or senior care needs as students aren't going to school, as are work remotely, or seniors are, you know, not going into facilities, senior care facilities because of the concern of COVID in there. So with case management services, there are hopefully additional resources besides rental assistance resources that individuals can be connected with. So that's the rental assistance portion, both services to counsel and provide legal services, but then also direct payment for rent. And I'm joined by Sue Lamedu, who can speak in some further detail about that. She's done a tremendous job working on creating that system. In addition, it's not just about tenants, it's also about homeowners. So there is a mortgage assistance and foreclosure prevention counseling program. The mortgage assistance, again, for individuals either through health impact or through the loss of the job, now I have difficulty paying their mortgage. There is a direct assistance that can be paid, although most of this is actually to fund the counseling component when individuals receive a potentially a foreclosure notice for the first time in their life. You know, they've been loyal with their payments for 15 to 20 years, and now all of a sudden they're dealing with a foreclosure situation, really is no fault of their own because of the pandemic. Those counseling services are really very, very critical, working with both Buffalo Urban League and Belmont Housing Services for those services. And the, we will be looking to complement these mortgage, the homeowner with the rental in terms of areas of greatest need in the city of Buffalo.
Brendan, before you go for this, you've got a lot of questions you're going on.
Sure.
You talked about an extreme situation, someone who's had their mortgage for 15, 20 years. That's not what we, that's not what the biggest concern is, is if they have 15, 20 years and even making payments, even if it's somebody that had their mortgage for two or three years, they still will be eligible.
Oh, yes. Correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Correct, correct. All eligible. I'm just, you know, so in terms of the value of the mortgage counseling, again, people will say, you know, what, you know, who could potentially benefit from this? And it's, I'm saying it's not just people who are, you know, first early into a mortgage and having a challenge, it's somebody who could have a mortgage for quite some time, and now first time in their life, they don't know how to deal with a foreclosure situation. So just making sure that they have those services.
Yeah, because as you guys present as much information, because we were streaming live, and people are paying attention, so now as you're presenting and you talked about 2-1-1, we want to educate them on how they go about it. Some of these things are new, and I want to ask you about the turnaround time we're getting these proceeds as well.
Yes, absolutely. So, so the, all of these, again, the administrative systems are largely in place at this point in time in terms of, there's only a certain group to award for the rental assistance, but all of the other administrative partners that we have have been identified through an RFQ process, RFP process, so that we're ready to go once the money comes in the door, ready to contract, and we're ready to hit the street with everything that is before you right now. And again, we've learned a lot through the county process at this point in time, and we're going to continue to work with the county after this as well.
So we won't be ready with this program until next year?
January.
Five days out?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct. Yep.
When will you be accepting applications and people can get the information, get their application to you?
The goal would be January, once the dollars are available again. And I think, Councilmember Wyatt, I think you're right, and I should also emphasize that recently the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency hired a communications manager, and she will be working to push all of this information out on a regular basis, both to the council and to the community as well, so that we can keep everybody up to date and also educate them on, educate everybody on these programs and eligibility and things of that nature. So we've clearly realized that communication is critical at this point in time, which is why we will, are developing the communications plan to go along with all of this as well.
Okay. Do we want to open it up to councilmembers with questions? Because I know this could be a long presentation, and I want to give them a chance to, before they forget their thought. Any councilmembers, any questions?
Question. Brendan, how much of the overall budget goes towards administrative costs?
Well, the administrative cost directly is $700,000 at the bottom. So those administrative costs cover things such as, as I'll talk about a little bit, the broadband work, a couple of employees for the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency, and also some initial additional data or analysis that we feel that we need to do. We are eligible in the administrative line to put over $2 million, but we have intentionally worked to keep it as modest as possible because we want to try and make sure that, again, we get as much of this money on the street. So a lot of the staff that we have already in the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency and the various departments in City Hall are going to be picking up that additional work. So it's not, you know, an additional cost, and we are able to get more of that out. There are then program delivery services as well. So program delivery, for the most part, is our third-party partners. So as I mentioned, like a 2-1-1 and the services that are provided there, Buffalo Urban League, the Westminster Economic Development Initiative for the Small Business Program. So those are the program delivery costs, for the most part. Again, there is some staff costs associated with the actual direct program delivery associated with it, but the bulk of it is, the vast bulk of it would be third-party providers. And they were, again, solicited through a competitive RFP process when, for that as well.
Okay. You didn't get to the Small Business Assistance Program. Is that a microloan or is that, are those grants?
It's a grant. It's a pure grant. I think each of you, to be consistent, have heard me say, when I talk to you about CDBG and small business, that it is typically not a marriage that I like to make because of all of the rules and regulations that come along with it. There is an exception, and that is the program that is presented to you, which is, and it's not that there isn't rules and regulations that come along with this, there are, it's just not as burdensome as if we were to do grants above the limit that we have here, which is the $10,000, and also businesses that have more than five employees. So we are targeting businesses that have no more than five employees, which we think, you know, many of the businesses along our commercial corridors fit into that, and a grant of up to $10,000, which means the potential, a minimum, I'd say, of 150 grants for small businesses in the city of Buffalo. Not all businesses will need the full 10,000. We're also coupling those grants with technical assistance from the Small Business Development Center, because we, you know, this is obviously a clearly trying time right now as well. So we're going to make that connection as well with the Small Business Development Center, have to give them a lot of credit because there is no charge. As part of this, they are offering that as a free service as we go through the grant program. Again, this will be administered by the Westminster Economic Development Initiative, who has a lot of years of experience at this point in time, is located in the Broadway Market, is establishing a location over on Bailey Avenue, and also has a location on the west side of Buffalo, has typically focused in the area that we are targeting, which, again, is the smaller businesses along harder-hit commercial corridors by COVID, and many MWBEs, New Americans, businesses of that nature. So Weedy brings a lot of background as an administrator to this.
Council President, Brendan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Brendan, for the presentation. I think it's very important, just two quick questions. One is, when you need to make an amendment, how fast would you need the council to act if you needed to move it from mortgage assistance to rental assistance or something like that?
I think it could go through the two-week cycle, Council President. My concern would more be the more the federal regulation that historically would be 45 days, I think probably two weeks is likely is fine. And again, hopefully, we're in the rhythm of communication where you know well before it hits you that it's coming, and we've talked about it to some degree, but two weeks should be fine, Council President.
And my second quick question, I know a lot of the small businesses that have been hired have been places, especially in my district, like barber shops, beauty salons, very small businesses that have contractors, though often working in those locations, but the business itself is suffering. Would they be eligible for something like that if they had under the five employees?
Yes.
Okay. And I know some of the other programs, they kind of got pushed out because of certain requirements. This would be a much more user-friendly, it sounds like, experience trying to get them...
That's certainly the goal. There are income limits, but we believe, again, for the businesses that you just described, a lot of the individuals will meet those income limits.
Okay, thank you.
Brendan, is it burdensome as far as documentation in this process, or have we streamlined that?
No, we still have to comply with, again, the federal rules and regulations. So we are working very hard to streamline the process, but we still, a lot of the administrative rules, none of them have been changed by any federal waivers or very few, I would say. One of the things, though, that with the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency that we've done recently is we've adopted a contractor advance payment program, which we also are now talking about using for the assistance, mortgage and rental assistance as well, so that at least contractors and homeowners and tenants do not have to wait until the check is cut as it's gone through all the various steps. We're advancing that money and then reimbursing an account that we have so that we can get those dollars out faster. So that's one of the ways that we are trying to, again, not make sure that once people are approved, they're not waiting a longer period of time for their money. And then also for contractors, same thing. We are not having the contractor wait 30 to 45 days while it goes through the check-cutting process. We're cutting a check right away, once it's all approved, inspected, and we know it's going to get funded, then we are advancing that money to the contractor so that they can move on to the next job as fast as possible, because as you see, one of the other programs that we have in here, which is homeowner improvement and also landlord improvement, that's going to require more contractors. So we want to make sure that we attract as many contractors as we can to these programs so that these important improvements can get done.
The one, Council President?
I'm sorry, when you mentioned, and I think I talked about this in our meeting, about the home improvement for the landlords, and I know you've already, and you can kind of opine quickly on this, because my concern is that a slumlord who has not done their tenants right shouldn't be getting a dime of this money. Left their apartment, their building, like the one next door to me that I always bring up, the slumlord who lives in New York City and does not take care of his property, those type of folks shouldn't receive anything, they have not taken care of these empty buildings. So I want to make sure the public knows, and you can assure us that those landlords that do not have people in it, that have neglected this city, they should be going to court and not coming for a handout.
No, not going to happen, Council President. We are going to have the fail safes in place so that that does not happen. The challenge that we do have, though, is that there are many small landlords, and when I say landlords, let me emphasize that this is really targeted on the smaller landlords, and I'm sure many of you know, you know, somebody who has the house, two houses, three houses, or something of that nature, that is additional income for them, and sometimes, you know, their only income. And then, again, at no fault of the tenant, suddenly they don't have 10 months of rental income. There was a statewide panel that we participated or viewed recently that, you know, surveyed those landlords and said, well, what happens when you're not getting that rental income? And they said the first thing to go is improvements to the property. They can't afford to do the improvements to the property. So it creates a really difficult situation where we need safe housing for tenants, but you have a landlord who, again, is strapped, doesn't have any money as a result of not getting 10 months of rental income, who can't afford to make the improvement, but yet we need the unit and we need for safe housing for the tenant. So part of the tenant program as well, the rental assistance program, will include inspections, and we don't want those types of barriers to, that present themselves for good reason, not bad reason, not because of neglect, but because of, you know, the challenge related to COVID. We don't want that to become a barrier to safe housing for an individual or for a family. So that's how we're coupling these dollars, and we feel that it's important to, again, think of this holistically, so that we make sure that we are preserving good housing stock in the city of Buffalo that has not been neglected by a negligent landlord. They will not be eligible for these dollars, and there will be checks in place to make sure that that is the case.
Brendan, what's the max that a individual can get for rental assistance as far, and for a landlord? What's the max they can receive?
I'm going to defer to Sue at this point in time. These numbers aren't 100% final, but they're pretty, pretty close. Sue?
Hi, good morning, everybody. We are actually considering a $3,500 maximum. What we found with the county program, which 3,500 was the maximum, is there are many tenants who don't need that much money, and there are some who need a lot more. So we're, again, just trying to, hopefully, we can keep everybody stable with the $3,500. Hopefully, many of the people who have much more than $3,500 have gotten assistance through the county and could now potentially, if they need it, come back to the city for some additional assistance.
So that 3,500 doesn't make, it doesn't distinct how many months or anything, it's just the one lump sum?
Yes.
Okay. And then for the landlord?
Oh, and just let me say that all of the payments go directly to the landlord. So the tenants will not receive the money, the landlord will sign a rental assistance agreement, they will agree that they won't evict the landlord or the tenant for a period of time, and then the payment will go directly to them.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. Any other questions, colleagues?
Councilmember, to your question on the landlord repair, Leslie Vishwanath, again, number's still in flocks, but generally has the broad number. Leslie, what's the broad number, proposed number at this point in time that's being considered?
Good morning, everybody. The proposed number is not to exceed $20,000 per unit.
Thank you, Leslie.
And I just got one final question, because we want to get this money out on the streets, because we know that there's a lot of people hurting. For the rental assistance, you have allocated 4.6 million. The program delivery is 1.6. Is it that much? I mean, how many organizations will you be working with that 1.6 million will be going out to them?
That's an estimate at this point in time, so we're going to get to a final number on that, but I'll have Sue, again, talk a little bit about the administrative or the program delivery component associated with it. Sue?
Yes, so we, so we're currently working with three organizations who will be delivering our ESG prevention dollars. And again, there are additional requirements under ESG and CDBG that we're going to be implementing, including the case management, which really kind of helps the person create a housing stabilization plan. One of the things we've learned, councilmembers, is that there are many people in the city of Buffalo who are living in apartments that they just can't afford, even when they were working, and if they're out of work now, their situation is worse. So we have a lot of challenges, and we know that this may be a staff-intensive type of an activity where we're going to work with people to kind of figure out their future housing and kind of get them over the hump right now. So we're negotiating, I'm trying to negotiate with the... And kind of get them over the hump right now. So we're, I'm negotiating, I'm trying to negotiate with the current providers. To be able to accept a lot of additional rental assistance and not a lot of additional admin dollars. But right now, there is a a second RFQ out where we pay agencies a per application. Fee, so to speak, so that the administrative dollars will be less and more money will get on the streets.
So each organization, if you said it's three, you're going to get about five hundred thousand, that's for hiring additional staffing and those type of things?
Um, yes, to be able to fully staff that program. But as I said, we are still negotiating with the agencies. Because we're just trying to figure a better way to get the dollars out the door without having to. Have a whole lot of administrative costs to deliver.
Any other questions, colleagues?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a quick question for Brendan. Brendan, do you know the timeline for the small for Weedy to disperse? This grant for for small businesses?
Uh, once the money is in the door, so they're already awarded by the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency. We'll get them under contract fairly soon. And then we might even start engagement with this. One of the final points, actually, I wanted to make to to emphasize again is that a lot of this money is going to be targeted towards the hardest hit areas of the city of Buffalo. So we have seen a significant impact, you know, as they go around, obviously, in in university. Fillmore, it's been less of an impact in in South and Delaware. Many of these services, some of the services will be citywide, such as. The mortgage counseling and things of that nature, but because of the, we don't have the money to meet all the need. We we are going to prioritize many of the most vulnerable areas in the city of Buffalo that have had the hardest impact. So those are those the areas Riverside as well has also been very hard hit by COVID. So those are the areas that that we will be focusing on. And as part of the communications plan, again, we will be pushing that information out. So that everybody understands exactly, you you know how how we are doing this.
Thank you. I know that I'm going to take some of like those applications that I'm saying knock on some doors that I, businesses doors in my district that. I know desperately need it. And I just want to, you know, is the application process pretty seamless in the sense of just filling out the application and sending it in?
There's going to be, there's going to be some paperwork that's required, but we're going to try minimize that. They have to obviously show that there's been an impact of COVID. So so that, you you know, whether it's year over year, you know, revenues or or you know, other impact, additional costs. Because of having to put up social distancing measures in their establishment. Those types of things, they will, we will have to be able to demonstrate, obviously, when we get audited by the federal government, that there was that impact. So that's the type of paperwork that that we will look for, but we're not looking, you you know, we are, again, looking to streamline it. So it's as easy as possible for small businesses.
Thank you.
So so Brendan, we don't have this, this is basically paperwork. This is not online that you can fill out an application or anything. This is where someone has to get a physical application?
So at this point, and again, council member, we'll reach out to you on this, in particular, when it comes to the small business program. We have learned from a number of the programs that have been done around the program that if, excuse me, around the country, that if we just. And and as a matter of fact, if you look at what happened in the county recently, they opened it up, they they received five thousand applications. And they were only able to award, I I think about two thousand of of those. Our approach is going to be more targeted. Our our approach is going to be, it's going to be less. We're going to have criteria that, again, is geographic in in nature and and particular types of businesses. So that we don't get overwhelmed with with that that type of need. So again, the business might submit an application and they have ten employees. And, you know, so we, we're going to be working with with Weedy to do it in a way, again, I hope with your offices, you know, council member. We, I walked the commercial corridor, your commercial corridor with you in that kind of a way. Quite frankly, I think is is how we need to approach this. And I think it would actually be more expeditious in terms of getting the money. Out the door to the to the businesses that need it, rather than a big release. And then more applications than we have money to 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 handle. So. That that is our 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 thought right now and the approach of how we handle it.
Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, thank you, Brendan and your staff. This is desperately needed and we want to get it out as soon as possible. So. I motion to approve. Seconded by Council President Pritchard. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Item number two, Department of Audit and Control, peer to peer review.
Hey, we have the Deputy Controller, Mr. Dow. How are you doing today?
I'm doing great, sir. You?
Doing okay. Okay, you want to go over that, that the?
Good morning, everyone. I basically do like a recap of what I discussed and caucus last week where per city charter. The Department of Audit and Control Audit Department is required to have a peer, a peer to peer review of our internal control process. We were able to, we, that contract got awarded to ally CPAs. And they came in, they performed a peer to peer review of Department Audit and Control, the audits we've done internally from. July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And it was determined by ally CPAs. That our audit work and reports comply with the standards issued by the Institute of Internal Auditors. And this peer review response supports our findings and recommendations for internal audits performed by the Department Audit. I do have the city auditor, Kevin Kaufman, on the line. If you guys have any questions in regards to the peer to peer review. Or anything to regard to what I just stated.
Any questions, colleagues? Well, no questions. I just want to compliment you guys. That was a great write up. You know, congratulations to the controller. You know, she's got a good team there and I guess this write up speaks to that. So we just want to thank you for your work, your efforts and compliment you on the great write up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to receiving file?
Motion to receiving file.
Item number three, October twenty twenty cash flow report.
Items open.
This items open, Mr. Dow?
So we filed October's. Twenty twenty cash report. And. I think what we need to realize, have a couple of bullet points that we did a review on, also have. Our cash debt manager, Greg Semensky, on the line, but just a couple of things to bring to this group's attention. When we look at it far as what the ending cash balance was for the end of October twenty, October thirty first, twenty twenty. The city had thirty nine point eight million dollars in its account. And a couple of things we want to look at was far as like year over year. Variances or or changes. So, well, I'm sorry, month over month. So far, health insurance costs. For retired employees went down by one point five million, and that was due to rebates that we received from CBS. Another month over month, bullet point that we want to point out is that our sales tax revenue was up five point one million. Due to Erie County Sales Tax Revenue Allocation Adjustment. A third is the the city received its quarterly funds of one point nine million from Buffalo Water. And we point these things out just to see, if you compare month over month, you might see these swings. And here's the reason for the swings. And then another bullet point, you might take a look at is you might see the additional cost went up by six point one million. And and labor costs, and that was due because we had three payroll cycles in a month of October. And now this is the part where we really want to start concentrating on in regards to the city's cash flow. The city will, we're projecting that the city will go into the negative in the month of December, twenty three point seven million dollars. And this is something that, and we're looking to be in the negative in our account from December twenty twenty all the way through May twenty twenty one. In regards to the city going into the negative for the month of December, that's normal. Because of the huge payments that we do send out in a month of December. So another thing we want to look at is, we will receive our first state aid payment. We're projecting to receive our first state aid aim payment. In a month of December for around fifteen million. But we also have to take into consideration in the month of December, when it comes to cash flow, is that we have to make our New York State pension payment. For city employees and police and fire, that net around thirty one point eight million. I'm sorry, that net around forty four point four million. And then we also have to make our second debt payment for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And that's around another twenty four point seven million. So when you look at the cash flow report, you'll see. The huge expenses that come through in the month of December, even though we're reviewing. October's report, November report should be, will be ready the second or third week of December. But we we also want everybody to concentrate on is that we have our actual numbers, but we also have to look into the future. Is the city, will the city be able to make, pay their expenses in the coming months? We have almost four months worth of actual data, which is from July twenty twenty through October twenty twenty. We also have to look at the projected months, November through June twenty one, to make sure we're able to pay our vendors. So that's something, those numbers I just ran off to you is those expenses in in December. Those expenses are much higher than a revenue that the city, or the cash the city will be bringing in. And that's the primary reason why we go into the negative in the month of of December.
So I I know we're going to go negative in December and forty four point four million is for the pension. I know we talked about possibly paying that in February. Is that correct?
We're projecting, we're going to pay it in December.
You're going to pay it in December?
Correct.
Okay, and so where does the money come from to pay that in December when we are going to be short in December?
It's like a bucket. The city receives its cash. And then also, I mean, as everyone know, we do have a joint account with Board Education. Where we will use funding, depending on the cash that the city have on have on hand. And then the cash that the Board Education have on hand also.
The amount that we're receiving from the state, is that, is that a reduced amount? Was the typical amount that we receive?
Well, we're projecting, we're hope, I mean, our, we, the. Administration did reduce, I believe, the aim payment by twenty percent. So we're projecting receive, I believe, around a hundred thirty million instead of a hundred sixty one that we've known to receive in prior years. So based off our projections, we're looking at, you got to look at prior year December amounts. So we're projecting receive fifteen point three million at some point during the month of December and aim payments, state aim payments.
Yeah, normally it's nineteen million dollars.
It normally is nineteen million?
Okay. Yeah.
Any questions, colleagues?
What? What's the variance between this year, December of this year and last year?
I'm sorry, Brad, I may come to, I mean.
You made it a controller, okay.
No, no, I I got my.
When you look at where we had ended October last year, believe it or not, we are ahead of last year. The whole year so far, we have been ahead cash wise. You know, going forward, you know, like Deputy Controller said, it is going to start going negative though, which it had historically. But we have done better than the projections, original projections too. For cash.
And the difference between the debt payment that we're making last year to this year?
It's it's the debt payment, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, the debt payment for this year is around twenty four million. That's the same amount, just about the same amount.
I thought it would be more.
No, I mean, the the that is, it has gone, has has gone down. You know, over the last, you know, bunch of years. So it's, it's not substantially, you know, it's it's probably right on par with what it was like.
Council President Pritchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, we will be in the negative in your projection for how many months for after December, including December?
The place, six.
Is that historically how long we've been in the negative after in December?
Off the top of my head, I I don't think it's been like six consecutive months, but Greg, if you remember off the top of your head.
Yeah, I mean, it's usually when we get the the state aid payment in in March, which was normally forty three million dollars. We usually go positive for, you know, that month in an April and then we go negative again. So it's it's kind of, it is the second half of the year that it's is problematic. Because of the way the state pays us, you know, we're, we get a little bit in December, we get more in March, and then we get the majority of it in in June.
So so this year, I mean, this time we'll be looking at half a year that we have to reach in what you call the bucket, the joint account. Am I correct?
That's what we're projecting, yes.
And is there, and when when the city reaches into the joint account? How do we know that the school board will have the funds that are there? To kind of float us?
I I think mainly, one, this is kind of consistent with prior years. But Greg and his team, along with Jeff Pritchard, they do a great job in reviewing the data and reviewing the numbers throughout the year. So you guys can see this cash flow report that we submitted for October, but we can make our changes. In November, December, and January, as the information becomes available to us. So this is just a projection that we're going to go in the negative from December through May, based off the information we have at this point in time. But as information becomes available. I know we don't like to say this word, this stimulus or whatever, we 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 reduce that amount that we possibly may have to use from the Board of Education. But it's it's we're just projecting based off what we know at the point in time of when the city will go into the negative.
And I think my my greatest concern, and you know, we can use that word stimulus, it is what it is. And the casino funds and all those things that are projected in this budget. That we don't know whether they're going to come in. The, my concern is, is one of the factors that we have not had in the past, and I think we got to face, is we haven't had COVID. And we haven't had where the Board of Education is being basically saying, if you open, you got to test. We haven't had where we know whether the Board of Education is going to spend a lot of money for PPEs. And that's my concern. Is is that, and whether it's you or Greg, and I think it's just to give us a little more assurance in the public. That that we we, those conversations are being had of whether the Board of Education is going to be able to float the city.
Yeah, stay up. We actually have a follow up call with Board Education, I believe, next week or in a couple of weeks. We have met with myself and the Controller and Greg have met with representatives from the Board of Education to discuss the use of city funds. Well, to discuss the the bucket, let's say, between the funding between the city and Board Education. As stated, we. It is is not normal. I mean, this is not normal circumstance, like you said, due to to COVID. As Commissioner Esch has stated, even when you look at the cash flow in the beginning part of the year, it's it's good. And I think they're doing good in regards to the budget's concern, was more on the back part of the year is where our concern is. And that's why I'm really talking about, yes, we're talking about actual numbers through October. We need to look at the coming months.
And I think maybe this commissioners, maybe this is more for the commissioner. Because we do have some agreements in place as we find ourselves in historically, because I don't want to act like the, you know, the the sky is falling. Which maybe it is, but it maybe it will, and that's where we have to deal with and be honest. If we, if we look at as we're going forward and we talked about some triggers being pulled. If we had to go into any type of savings or set aside, do we see that now as that's a possibility? Or are we simply going to depend on the bucket?
You you're still muted.
Looking at from the cash flow projections that Mr. Semensky provided. It looks like come March would be a problem month at that point for the city. But it's still through the Board of Ed, there would be funds available. It would reach that criteria that we had in our agreement to start looking at things come March.
So I think in fairness, so that March, no one thinks that the common council or myself is being overly harsh. I think that because we know right now that we do not have the casino funds right now coming in. And it seems as if that industry is suffering like every other industry, and whether that's going to happen or not. That there start to be some discussions so that we're not in March. And we find ourselves in a place where we've got to kind of, everything's got to be pushed through, cannot have the proper airing. Or discussion with the council. Um or discussion with the council, so I just wanna be clear in December um that on December first. That we know that these things, that these things are fluid and they're gonna change, and they're gonna change a lot. And the best projections are probably at this point, the best projections. Uh but I think that although we hate to look at where we may have to do service cuts. Uh nobody really wants to talk about that many times, and I think that honestly. Before we even touch the the last bit of money that's in savings before. We dig too far in the bucket because the bucket um is not the endless flow of wine that Jesus turned the water. And it it's just not gonna keep flowing. And at the end of the day, when you reach in the bucket and you take out of the bucket, you gotta put back into the bucket. Which is then gonna affect coming years. And um so I've been clear that, you know, this council stands ready to have those conversations. Um the the picture is not rosy, and I just, I I think we just gotta deal with that, that the picture is not rosy, it's dire. And we need to be getting in position, you know, getting ready instead of having to react at the last minute, so. I've been told before there's a plan, uh I'm gonna trust that there is a plan. But again, I don't know, and hearing that for six months, we're gonna reach in a bucket. Where is the bucket, where's the money gonna come from to go back in the bucket?
We're we're um projecting, we get our last state aid payment, our projected last state aid payment in the month of June. And we're projecting around uh seventy, almost seventy-eight point seven million.
And that will make us whole again without needing to go into any type of reserve funds or anything else?
Well, the thing with that, what you had to take in consideration, you and you raising about the questions and concerns, is that we. We know within a budget, uh it was projected, or its budget is that sixty-five million and a federal stimulus and another eleven million. Uh in casino money, we projecting uh to receive that, those funding in the month of June twenty twenty-one. Only because the uncertainty, we was gonna receive the money, so we didn't project as if that sixty-five million was gonna be. Uh we was gonna receive it in in January uh first twenty twenty-one, we gave the full fiscal year to put those dollars into our projections. So in order for us to be like in a positive. We will have to receive the um federal stimulus money, sixty-five million and eleven million. And uh tribal compact money along with our last uh state aid payment uh for the fiscal year of seventy-eight uh point seven million.
And right now, um and maybe just for the commissioner, do we have any indication? That that eleven million, let's start there, is, uh do we have any court orders, anything that's coming forward for that eleven?
Not any more than we did before, we had the court order for them to pay and the state has to push on that. And I have no updates on that at right, at this time.
So let's just kind of erase this eleven million for right now, let's just, let's just act like it's not coming because. Let's act like it's not coming, and so we're eleven million down. Um any indication from our federal representatives of sixty-five million uh coming from the federal government?
That's a much more positive comment I can make, we, the mayor has had conversations with our local delegation. Um I'm sure you're watching the news, the new Treasury Secretary is very pro stimulus for states and local municipalities. So that conversation has been very positive so far.
So I'll I'll end with this and turn it back over to the chair, is that. Um to me, there should be multiple meetings going on with all three branches of government, multiple. Um there is probably, besides legislation, um the finances of this city. Are very, very important. Most of of what we talk about is in this, this setting, which is fine and which is public and the public should know. But I think as we're talking about the, where where the city and how we're going to survive, what we're gonna do with our savings, that it will become. Um less sometimes uncomfortable to have these conversations if we have more of them. Uh where we sit down and talk about it and really start to look toward the future. Of how we are going uh to survive without going into excessive debt. And leaving that excessive debt to my grandchildren. Um I think that's important, I think it's a real important conversation, some people get nervous of having this as if people are fighting. It is good government, it would be done in any other business, and it should be done in government, so we stand ready. For any meeting to continue to talk about our finances and where we may need to make adjustments. Uh so that we are not at the last hour trying to figure this out, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President, um this question, shouldn't we be having these meetings because we're gonna be going into the, we're gonna be in a negative in December? Because I don't think the bucket has anything to do with our going forward because it's the city's money, not what's in the bucket.
I I know our agreement, Mr. Chair and uh Commissioner Controller, Deputy Controller, get to me if I'm wrong. Is if they had to go into the reserves. The the bucket is kind of what normally happens in this time uh historically. But if, and and am I wrong, Commissioner, it was if they had to go, if the city has to go into the reserves, there it triggers meetings.
Um I believe it was if we had, we were sixty percent less than the prior year in our cash. At the end of the month, sixty or seventy-five percent less, I'd have to check the exact number.
There there's a a, an understanding that we would meet if we. Once we got to zero and if if the city had to go into the reserves, I'm almost sure. And we could pull that agreement, I think this is a point where we need to brush off those agreements, remind each other of them so that. Um if if any of those triggers are pulled, that we are immediately going into uh sessions of meetings uh about our city's finances.
Yeah, there was a trigger, you're correct, I know.
Majority Leader, Revere? You're on mute.
Regarding our need to meet um based on the conditions that we set initially. Because although we're not using our reserve, because we really don't have reserve. Um we're using the bucket, and for people that are watching us via Zoom, they're probably gonna do, what the heck is the bucket? Uh the bucket is money that doesn't belong to us, belongs to the Board of Education. And my concern is, um if I'm a board member. Uh within the Board of Education, I'm asking the question. Is this, are are we gonna get our money back? Uh based on the projections, at the very end, we have to pay back into the bucket. And as this goes further out and there's no stimulus, there's no casino money, I don't know how we put money back into that bucket. Um so if I'm a school board member, I'm concerned about the money that's being taken out and. The ability to put it back into the bucket should we need it as a school district. I don't know if Board of Educations have shared any concerns with regards to the use of their money.
They've uh raised questions uh to the Controller, and as I stated before, uh we will have, we have one meeting with that group. And we'll have another meeting with them um following, uh depending on uh what the plan will be.
And and going back to the need for the meetings, because we didn't use reserve funds, that we don't need, what we are using is somebody else's money. Uh that we have to pay back, so we should possibly be holding these meetings, I agree with Council President. I don't want people that that are watching us think that this council is just sitting down with, you know, it's uh sitting on their hands. Yeah, look at, we're looking uh proactively to discuss options and alternatives, and we should be talking about those things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am the Education Chairman and I have had board members and school board members turn to me as well and bring those concerns up. It is a concern, so Delano. You mentioned the seventy-eight, potentially seventy-eight million dollars in uh state aid. That going to be used to fill back up the the bucket at at?
As part of the cash account, so that will go right into the cash account.
Okay, thank you.
Um Deputy Controller, I just question if if, because we, it's a possibility, probably a better possibility. We're gonna get stimulus money next year. Why wouldn't we defer the pension payment until what you guys talked about February as opposed to using the cash now, since we do have some. There's a, there's a a light at the end of the tunnel that we're probably in a better situation to get that money next year than we are this year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if we pay now, we're basically paying, it's like uh, have you, you have an invoice in within thirty. Where if you pay ahead of time, they give you a discount, right now, I believe we have savings almost, I don't know, it's two or three hundred thousand we pay now compared to paying, I believe in February.
It also affects our credit rating down the line, I'm sorry, Greg, go ahead, it affects our credit rating also.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, you you're actually, is is it actually is due February first, but. Um the state gives you incentive to pay it early in December. I mean, it's it's obviously an option that to do it, but um, you know, at this point, you know, I I think we're uh. In a position to pay it now, but.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, oh, Deputy Controller?
Uh one more thing, just to let you guys know that uh the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for twenty twenty is final. Um I will file it with the council today. And we will be under uh the direction of the Controller, she would like to hold two informational sessions, similar to what we did last year. Um we will hold one informational session on a CAFR on December ninth from ten AM to eleven AM. And then the second informational session will be held on December ninth also from two PM to three PM. So we welcome of uh council, council staff, uh the administration and air staff. Uh it'll be a Zoom invite, I will send information out uh to uh Malcolm. And to Commissioner Esch, and they can share uh what who they need to share the information with. But similar to like we did last year, we think the Controller felt was real helpful uh for you guys to to get an overview of the CAFR. And and the numbers uh from fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I will let you know far as uh. Just an overview of the city financials and how we finished last year comparing to where we at for the first quarter, first four months. Of uh the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, thank you for that information. Motion to table? You're me, I'm you. Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Next item.
Item number four, approval to add three vehicles to fleet.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open and I apologize, we don't need BPD, I I thought these were new vehicles, these are coming from the dirt lot, I believe. Okay, so we're gonna approve these.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number five, first quarter gap twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Items open.
Okay, and we have Commissioner Esch to speak on that?
I do, I'm here, good morning, thank you, uh I'm gonna ask Jessica Brown, our Director of Administration and Finance, to go over the first quarter gap with you. And we're both here for any questions.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
First quarter gap is for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty, so. Only three months have gone by in the year when this was prepared, so it's very early in the year and there's lots of unknowns that we will determine later on. So um to be conservative, we're projecting a small surplus, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um we are projecting. In um a decrease in revenues and expenses for various reasons, for revenues. We're seeing um parking and TBA is trending downwards, so we are projecting that we're gonna lose some money there. Um also, our licenses and fees, the activity has just been slower because of COVID, so that's a little bit lower. Um our sales tax is trending actually higher than budgeted, lower than last year, but we left that level for now. And we're gonna see how that works out as the year goes on. For expenses, um we're seeing a little bit of reduction in expect expenses, about twelve million dollars. Oh, um most of it is due to the departments within the administration, they have quite a few vacancies that we don't intend to fill. Also, there's been some reduced programming because of COVID that couldn't be avoided, so that saves some money. And this goes along with the um money that those departments froze um a few months ago. And under general charges, our utilities are trending downward, so we're seeing a savings there, and then our fringe. Is a little, is lower than we anticipated also, and that includes a refund from um Medicare Part D that we received through a consultant. So overall, um because it's so early in the year that we prepared this report, we are showing a surplus, a small surplus. And um waiting to see as time goes on how things come out. Uh any questions about that?
And also, just to, we did include um the casino money and the federal stimulus as being received at the end of the year.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this round, did you see that, yeah, you see a uh a downward, what a uh downward trend of twelve million dollars in expenses?
The projection of a reduction in expenses is due to, um mostly due to vacancies that are in, within the departments that we don't intend to fill unless. Essential, and then also, there's just been some programming that has been eliminated this year, reduced just because of. The virus that we couldn't avoid and that actually produced some savings also.
Yeah, I mean, if we could, if we could get twelve million dollars in um in savings of expenses this year, I mean, that's that's a healthy amount of money.
Yeah, hopefully more.
We did reach out to the departments and they had provided, in addition to the reduced programming, additional funds that we had put into a freeze account. To assist during the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowman, did you have any?
Yeah, I'll go for it. I was just reading, can you just refresh my memory, I I think this might be for Commissioner or Jessica, whoever can answer, but what was the situation with the? Firefighters and the uh the graduation, like it resulted in additional overtime or was that a situation? Like uh, due to COVID, they couldn't, uh they couldn't graduate, something like that?
Correct, their graduation was delayed about four months, so during that time period, the, they were forced to pay some overtime to the existing firefighters. They graduated at the end of October, so that's helped to reduce the overtime, where we're gonna see that savings for the rest of the year. They're also um having a new class starting in February. So that will help too, and that class is actually um gonna be not um through. The fire department, it's gonna be at Montor Falls, so we're gonna see some savings even with the training piece of that one.
And we've saved money.
Answer your question, it was about four month delay.
Okay, thank you.
Um when are we expecting to get this money, this safer money, the grant? Um for the firefighters, I mean, we've been paying this basically in advance and we have to be reimbursed, is that what this is?
Yes, it is, reimbursable.
We sent in, or I'm sorry, go ahead, Jessica.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
We submitted for the last fiscal year, and then at the end of the six months, we will um submit for the first six months of the current fiscal year.
So what is the amount that we're looking at for this, this, the one that you've just requested? You said the six months?
Was about a million, anything.
Okay. Now, uh can you all give us an analysis, because I, you, was, we're always told. When we hire additional firefighters and police officers, it saves us overtime. But oh, since I've been here, those overtime numbers have been increasing, increasing, we've been adding police officers, we've been adding firefighters. And we're still over the overtime numbers. So I I really need you to show me with some numbers and data, that that number, because it seemed like that's happening. And you know, in your report, it doesn't show the overtime because it's all lumped in. But can you break that number out so that we can see within overtime numbers what we budgeted versus what what's actual?
Sure, um we, for firefighters, they definitely have a minimum manning, as you're well. You know, they have to have a certain number of people on each of the apparatus. So what happens if you don't, when the class had not graduated, we didn't necessarily have enough people to fill each platoon. So we had to bring people on a regular basis on overtime. Now that people are here, people are taking vacations, people are calling in sick, so at that time, we also, at some point, not every platoon. Have to bring in people on overtime, but we can show you kind of how it breaks down that way.
Yeah, because because what concerns me is that we made a deal about fire. That I'm just kind of scratching my head, like, how do we agree to that, that they work twenty-four hours, they work the entire day. So if someone calls in sick, the person that comes in.
Gets paid twenty-four hours.
Paid twenty-four hours. That doesn't seem like a good deal to me, and 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 what you said, people call in sick, they take vacation, so. There's a whole lot of overtime from what I can see, what makes sense. Um if they are working forty, forty hours a week, right, or what is it, eighty hours, the dude have to work? Bid, bi-weekly, they get eighty hours?
For, they get paid for eighty hours bi-weekly.
So anything beyond that is overtime.
Yeah, so, we're also working with the department, they have a number of uh firefighters who are on IOD. Um and as a matter of. Um, and as a matter of fact, Jessica has started working with the department to. Um, process them faster, make sure they're going to their doctor's appointments, um. Getting them back to work on a quicker basis, following up a little more efficiently with each of the firefighters.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I, we, if you could provide us something, because that, it, it, it just doesn't seem like it's going to pan out for us. And it just seems like, again, those overtime costs have been going up and up. I know that the advocates have been screaming for. Um, reallocation of funds for the police department. I know that's going to come up, you know, in the fall, I mean, in the spring. Um, so we need to start looking at, how do we do that? And not just to do it just for the sake of doing it, but how do we? Make efficient, um, the police department, um, as far, as far as it, as it goes, as those dollars. When we talk about behavioral, uh, social workers and those type of people to help with that, so.
Police department has, has reduced their overtime. I have to say, they are lower than they were last year. And we do have a meeting scheduled this week, as a matter of fact, to discuss. How they, um, deploy their minimum manning and what is actually necessary. So we are working with them also.
But a big portion of that, as you wrote up, is that there hasn't been any, um, the for, the overtime for going to court. Because there hasn't been much court, so that's probably. Big, so it's not the normal situation. So until we get to the normal situation, we don't even know if that's really the impact, the impact is. Because of COVID, they haven't had court time and that saved us.
You're right, we have to look at everything.
Yeah, any other questions?
Mr. Chair. Councilmember Scanlon.
Oh, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you. Um, Doc, uh, Commissioner Eschich, um. The chair brought up court time. Um, what is the rate officers are paid for court time? Is it overtime or is it a different amount?
They get four hours of straight time, I think it is, to go to court, additional pay.
Straight time is not an actual overtime rate?
Oof, I, I'm going to have to defer to the police departments.
Okay. Um, and then another question I have, you referenced the freeze account. What is that up to at this point?
Uh, we have approximately, I think we, about ten and a half million dollars in there.
Okay, thank you.
The question, Councilmember.
Mr. Chair, um, the, regarding the court time, it's four hours. A minimum, whether you're there a half hour or four hours.
Is it straight time or overtime?
So, so it's straight time, so is it straight time even if that person has over eighty hours?
Yes.
Really? So you can, so, so you can do that? So if a person wears eighty hours, they get, let's say, twelve hours court time. You just pay them ninety two hours? Regular pay?
Yeah.
Hmm, okay. I didn't know that you could do that through the labor laws, that if you get overtime, you get overtime over eighty, but the contract. The, the, the contract supersedes state law?
Yeah.
Hmm, okay.
And as the council member said, the officer gets that minimum of four hours.
Right.
If they're there longer than four hours, they get paid the additional money, additional hours.
Okay.
But if they're only there for an hour, they still get paid for four hours.
Thank, thank you so much. Um, um, Commissioner, when will we see that? Because I didn't see in the budget for the, um, s- schools on cameras. That wasn't, that wasn't in here, but, but this is because of this September. I didn't even see in the cash flow. Did we, are we receiving the funds for that as of yet?
Um, they closed out October. We have not received those funds. There's, I believe there's only approximately ten thousand dollars so far received.
Okay.
And they do it on a monthly basis, so we should be seeing it this week, the deposit.
Okay, so what, what's, what's the timing on that? I mean, they, i- is it a thirty day turnaround that we, I mean, once they get the tickets? We get the money, okay, thirty days?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay.
So we didn't start till the middle of October, so we're still playing catch, you know, we haven't received much on that.
What, what's the number? Do you know the number thus far, what, what we received thus far?
I believe, I'm going to be guessing, but I believe it's about five hundred thousand dollars right now.
Okay. Okay, so what is the millions that we were talking about? I mean, they said that we had received, it was like one point two million or one point seven million, that's not, or is that our percentage? The five hundred is our percentage?
The five hundred is ours. I believe the numbers, and I'm not, I was not part of that conversation, but I believe that was someone extrapolating from the number of. Tickets that had been originally written.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Wingo.
Yeah, who gets, who gets, who gets their, uh, share first? Uh, Donna, do you know?
Uh, Gesso, the company that we had hired to do the tickets.
Okay, so they will get, let's say we did make one point seven million dollars in a month or a week. They will get whatever their cut or share is first, their entire contractual amount. Or do they get that incrementally? And then we begin to get our, how's that formula work out?
They get their full share and send us our, our portion.
Okay, so we get whatever.
The payments, they receive the payments, collect it and then forward our.
Okay, so e- e- every payment, they get a percentage and we get the other percentage. Until up to a certain amount, then we boom. We're done and then they get the rest of the money.
No, no, we continue to share through everything.
Oh, okay, that's good, that's good. All right, thanks, appreciate it.
So they get their percentage, then we get ours? That's, as we go through it, it's not something that they get all their money? Because there, we had a contract of the amount that they were supposed to get, correct?
That was for the school bus arm cameras?
Got you, right.
That was a different contract.
Okay, Councilmember Noakowski.
Mr. Eschich, how much, uh, do you know, I, I can look through the contract again, but do you know what the startup cost? I knew that there was some, you know, I, some are saying that, you know, we made, you know, one point three or one point seven million dollars, but. And I do know that, you know, they get their portion, the city gets our portion, but were there startup costs that we initially had to pay? Until we.
That the city paid? Uh, Gesso had to pay for all the, um, cameras. We paid for the beacons and the installation of beacons and we paid for the signs. I can get you the cost on that. I don't have that, but we did. Pay that type of money to warn the citizens.
Thank you.
Help notify them.
Um, Commissioner, so I know that we have beacons, we should have beacons at all twenty locations now, correct?
I believe we're pretty close to that, yes.
Okay, and I know that we, there was supposed to be new signage and additional beacons in other areas. Has that happened yet?
Uh, they're in the process of doing that right now. It has not been completed.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
What would you like?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Go for the item.
I thought we had one more item, didn't we?
There's an item number six.
Number six?
Inquiry into license plate readers.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.